Welcome to the Orlando Sentinel's editorial board interview for Seminole County School District Four, which oversees the education of more than 63,000 students and has 7,000 employees at nearly 100 schools. Today, we'll be talking to current school board chair Abby Sanchez and the two candidates who are also in this race. And I'm not going to say challenging her because they all seem to be getting along very well. And but that's Stephanie Arguello, a community health professional who has taught science at the Orlando Science Center, and Kelly Kreitz, who is a product of Seminole County Schools and has worked across the country as a gymnastics coach. So has a has a pretty cool perspective on what's going on right now. And so we are gonna gonna go ahead and get started. Julie, you have our first question, I believe.
I do. So the Seminole County School District received an A rating again this year with no D or F schools. This is worth celebrating, and there's some tremendous success stories. What should the school board do to keep this rating and improve those schools that are rated below B? And we'll start with Ms. Kreitz.
So it is a success, and I think that we have a wonderful school district. And I think that everybody that is working really hard is doing a good job. There are a few things that I would like to change. I would like to take cell phones out of the classrooms. I would like to enforce the code of conduct, including the dress code. I would like to have more support for the teachers via the administration. And I think that we can do all that as long as we work together and cooperate in the policy process.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, same question.
Hi, I am extremely proud to have an A-rated school district. Out of the years that we've had grades, 20 out of the 21 years, we have been rated an A. So it's extremely impressive to me that we've been able to celebrate that and that I have been a big part of that. As a former educator in the classroom with over 26 years of classroom experience and 36 years in education, I think it's extremely important that our teachers get the kudos for this because they've been working diligently for this. And it's it's a combination of making sure that they have phonics-based instruction and reading fluency. And I don't need to mention the fact that I want to stress this because I do this at school board meetings all the time. But many times, it's based on one test. And I feel that we need to eliminate the amount of assessments that we have. We were supposed to have less testing, and we actually had more testing. And so for me, these progress monitoring systems that are taking place, it's too much. Our teachers want their classrooms back. They want to make sure that they have that and that they can connect with their students and teach their students so they can be as successful as possible. And I am super proud that we've been able to do this and we're able to continue with all the different things that we have been able to provide for our students as well as rolling out our new Student Success Express with us that's going to help our underserved communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arguello, same question.
Yes. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this. As a parent of a current student in the Seminole County Public School Systems, like many people in Seminole County, I chose to move there and put my child in the school due to the legacy of academic excellence. Education has always been something that's extremely important. Important, it's been a game changer in my personal life and something I wanted for my daughter. So it's no surprise to me that we continue to have an A-rated school system. And I think to what Ms. Sanchez said as well, you know, that's one aspect of the performance of the schools that is very important. But I think when you speak to, so we have, you know, academic legacy of excellence that we've had. But when we look at where we are at right now as an education system, as a state, and really in the world that has changed, we were talking before this started about being hybrid now. We live in a digital world and a physical world. I think we have an opportunity to protect our legacy by leaning into the future. We do have some tough things to navigate as far as like social media, cell phones, how to incorporate those, but in a way where it's not taking away from the learning of our students. And then when we talk about those lower-performing quartile of students especially, not only looking at academics, we know things like the reading level at third grade is one of the greatest indicators of success in the future. But what are those social and economic issues that are impacting students being able to come and show up and learn? So I think in addition to continuing the great work, working to support our teachers and remove some of the additional administrative burden, I've talked to a lot, had the pleasure to talk to a lot of teachers, and they are overburdened and unable to do what they love best, which is be in the classroom, creating these learning experiences for kids. So I think it's a combination of continuing the great work that has produced academic excellence, but really continuing to focus in on what are those issues around that impact our students being able to benefit from the great education that they are offered, and also looking at how to better support our teachers, whether it's through, which I know it's a long fight, but teacher pay, and making sure our teachers can do what they do best, which is teach. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. Despite the A grade, U.S. News and World Report shows that among high school students, only 59% are proficient in reading and less than half are proficient in math. What should the district do to improve here? And we'll start with Ms. Sanchez.
Well, first of all, it's it takes a village, as you know, to raise our children. And it takes a collaboration of everyone to be vested in making sure that we are doing whatever we can to make sure that our children are reading at proficiency level. I also feel that it's extremely important that you've walked in the shoes of a classroom teacher, where I have had that experience and I visit the classrooms all the time, and I do see students that have struggled. I have a background of expertise in ESE, exceptional student services. And it's critical that we meet each child's individualized needs and to help our teachers as well as our students navigate through these trying times. And with the importance of early literacy, literacy, we have created and implemented, or should I say continued, the Great Start Program because it starts at birth and to three years of age where you have the most incredible learning experiences at that time. And it's something that I had a passion about, and I felt that it was extremely important that we kept that program to serve all of our students. And essential learning literacy skills at that age and throughout their life is extremely important. These resources help build the foundation for them. It helps identify the needs and uniqueness of each learning style for the children. So having that at the beginning is extremely important. But I also feel that we need to connect, continue to build phonics-based literature into the programs, too. Too much technology needs to go away. We need to continue focusing on training our teachers for dyslexia training. And it's imperative that we have that correlation with tutoring sessions and holding students accountable as as well as not enabling them because I don't want to push children through the system. I think it's important that we make sure our children get the reading proficiency up to where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Arguello, what is your view?
Sure. And I think I take a bit of a different angle here, especially post-pandemic. We've had a couple of years of really drastic change that our students have gone through, where there was a lot of isolation, being out of the classroom, our teachers having to, everyone having to essentially change how our educational system was provided, and then shifting back into a very different environment where learning isn't just happening in the classroom or in textbooks, it is also happening online. And I think rather than leaning into a full removal of technology, I don't think that's realistic with where we are going as a world. I think we have to really lean into how can we use this technology to a benefit? How can we better understand and meet students where they are now? I can tell you, as a mother of a high school student, the way that my child receives information and processes information is very different from even myself being in high school a few years ago. So the way that people receive information, especially this new generation, is just different. And so I believe it's our opportunity to really adapt, to see how we can meet them where they are. And yes, for those younger students, creating that foundation early for having not only a love of learning, but to have that encouragement is extremely important. But for those kids that are currently in middle and high school and already beyond, how do we, I think we need to lean in to really see how we can wrap around them to help them not only catch up, but be able to thrive as they enter our workforce, they enter, you know, being enrolled or enlisted, whatever path they may choose. And a lot of that, again, goes back to as a public health professional, what's going on around the learning environment? We know that a lot of the issues that students are having, whether it's absenteeism, whether it's behavioral challenges, a lot of these things are beyond the academics. So if we can focus on creating those social structures, increasing mentorship, taking a more trauma-informed approach to education, so regardless of what specific minority incidents you might be experiencing, if we can focus on wrapping around our students, I think we can create a learning environment where they can all be successful regardless of what barriers they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitz, what is your view?
I agree very much with Ms. Sanchez on the setting the bar at a certain level. I think that we need to make sure that all of our students are aware that this is what we require, and we're not going to push you through if you're not there. But you do need to create the support system for that, the tutoring, the mentorship, the homeworks based on phonics. I have a one-year-old, a five-year-old, and a four-year-old, and we start when they're babies, reading to them higher-level stuff. We read encyclopedias, we're reading stories, we're hearing words. I think that's really important, and I think our elementary school teachers are doing a good job in that. Yeah, I think it comes with middle school and high school when you get children that, you know, their hormones are changing, everything is changing in their world. So you have to get the love of books early, and you have to teach them that knowledge is everything to their success. I think that we're doing a pretty good job in that. But in the high school, like you mentioned, why are they graduating and not being able to read? Is that we are pushing kids through when they're truly not ready for the next grade. And I think that we can work as a board to create an environment where we support them. But if you don't make it happen, you can't be just getting the reward without doing the work.
Thank you so much. One of the biggest challenges right now and for a long time has been retaining and recruiting teachers. What more should Seminole County be doing to work on this? And let's start with Ms. Kreitz.
So in this campaign, I've been talking a lot to teachers, and the biggest thing I'm hearing is the gap between the administration and the teachers and their needs being heard. So if you're in an environment where you're not being heard, you don't want to be working there. Even if you're working for low pay, they will do it because they have the heart of a teacher. And they didn't get into this to make money. They did it because it's a passion. So they need to be supported from the top down. I feel that a lot of our teachers right now are in an environment that's not necessarily safe because our code of conduct is not being enforced. And that's something that I can't look at the details until elected. So I think that keeping the teachers safe will bring them back. And I think that we could look at what Orange County did and how they negotiated their budget to give the raises for they are deserved.
And so Ms. Arguello.
Sure. So, you know, I think teachers are the backbone of our education system. And not that they are the only important piece, but certainly without having well-qualified, compassionate, and passionate teachers, we wouldn't have an A-rated district. So it's definitely important not only to attract new talent because we do have, you know, an aging teacher population, people that are retiring. We want to make sure that we're producing new, talented, and passionate teachers. Funding is one of the biggest issues. We just, I just recently attended, I'm sure my colleagues were also there at the most recent state of the school, where they talked about funding as one of the top three issues. That has been a longstanding issue in Florida where we under-invest, unfortunately, in education. So it is going to take more than a local effort to solve that larger issue. But I do believe there's opportunity locally. One opportunity that we could have taken advantage of is with the local millage tax in Seminole County, advocating for a larger portion of it to help invest in our schools. So while waiting and advocating on a state level, I do think there's opportunities at the local level for us to be creative and seek ways to bring more resources in so that we can afford to not only pay our teachers more, but even renegotiate benefits. You know, I have one of my best friends is a teacher at a high school here locally in Seminole County and can't afford to have her kids on the health insurance. And that, you know, they're raised, they're choosing to bring their time to dedicate to other kids and not able to provide health insurance for their own. So I think, again, focusing on advocacy at a state level, but on the local level, being creative about what we can do, and also looking at success in other districts. There are schools, for example, I read a study about a school in California where they've looked at other creative ways to bring in revenue. And I know that the Seminole County has done this, but it's, I think there's an opportunity to double-click into, whether it's rentals of facilities, whether it's businesses, catering services that we can do using the existing facilities and tools that we have. So I think thinking really creatively about what are those other ways while we fight up to the state and further, how can we locally bring in more revenue, partner more deeply with our existing businesses and nonprofits so that we can better support today while fighting for that larger investment tomorrow?
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez.
Wow, this is such a huge one for me. So bear with me if I have to look at some of my notes on this because this is something I'm very passionate about, something that I have been fighting for in Tallahassee way before I even became a school board member because I have been an advocate for our teacher salaries. It has been critical for us to retain teachers. And I am in the classrooms all the time, and I hear the same thing that Ms. Arguello hears as well. And I volunteer so much time in the classrooms, and it's a significant issue. And we have career fears that we have. We do rent out our facilities as much as we can to build in extra revenue. We are able to do all that. We rent out our pools, we rent out our football stadiums. We do whatever we need to do. But the bottom line is our legislators are not giving us the funding that we truly need. Yes, they gave us some money, but did they give us enough? No, not even close. Our beginning teachers are now making $50,000. You have to hold down two to three jobs to make ends meet. And that is something that they are just burnt out mentally, emotionally, physically. And their wellness, their mental wellness is so critical for us. So to me, we need to do a better job in making sure that we have that resource available for them. We also are doing our homegrown teaching program. We partner with UCF and we partner with Seminole State College. And it is a wonderful resource to have these teachers come back and get guaranteed a position in our school system. So this homegrown program called Teach is at Winter Springs High School. And I want to make sure that our teachers feel that they have the support for behaviors and any kind of services that they have, that they need, that they are getting that and that we're listening to them, that our administrators are listening to them without any retaliation, that our leadership teams are listening to them because it is critical, critical that we all work together in order to maintain, I'm sorry, to maintain our teachers and keep them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will jump in with the next question. School Superintendent Sarita Beeman has been on the job for about two and a half years now. Please assess her performance, and if there was a vote to retain her, how would you vote? And we'll start with Ms. Arguello.
Thank you so much. I I especially admire the way that Superintendent Beeman took on the role, especially in Seminole County, with the way that the votes went and the, unfortunately, the divisiveness that we saw in the community around that time. So to step into a role, you know, amongst a board where you know that you have board members who voted multiple times against you, as well as a community that really, from the start, questioned her ability to lead, I really admire the grace that she was able to present as stepping in and still being able to deliver on results of maintaining, not only maintaining the A legacy that Seminole County has had, but really embracing and leaning into the school system. I think there's a lot of value in having someone who is from, you know, this local area that was, you know, has grown up in the system and has been able to lead with, again, lead with grace, lead with openness, lead with a goal of collaborating to solve issues. And I certainly would be proud to vote to continue that. I also do believe there's always opportunity for growth. And I think, again, one of the biggest challenges that we have right now, we're in a very critical and transformational time as an education system, as a community, as a county, and beyond. So I think it is important for us to question what we have done. You know, yes, we've been successful as a district, and I consider myself a part of this district, you know, with, as a, as a parent and as someone who has worked in this district focused on improving health and outcomes for Central Florida residents. So I do believe, you know, it's all of us, it takes all of us for us to continue to be successful. But we also need to scrutinize and look at if what we're doing now is setting ourselves up to stay above the curve as we are seeing the new challenges. And again, this shift from being in a physical to a hybrid world is a game changer. And we need to embrace and stay ahead of what that means for our education system, for our teachers, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. Ms. Sanchez.
So, yes, originally, I did not vote for Superintendent Beeman. And I even mentioned in all the barber shop talk that it was a mistake. We all own up to our mistakes, and I will say that we have built a very strong relationship. We have, we're family. We have created, and, you know, we can all agree to disagree with each other all the time. As a family, you can do that. With your colleagues, that happens. But learning to compromise and learning to work together is so critical. And I would say honestly that Superintendent Beeman and I are, have a strong bond, a strong relationship. We can laugh, we can cry together, we work together. We have built a great, she has built a strong team. And I always say, a strong leader builds strong leaders. And her leadership team is phenomenal, and she did that. And with everything that's been going on in our world since the pandemic and the toxicity between the political aisles, which has created havoc, people are focusing on one negative thing rather than the whole picture of all the great things that are happening in our county. And it's critical that we see how important that we have this. We have had so many challenges, and we have done so many different things and taken action results. And what she's done in her last conference that we had is create a conference called Based on Connections. And we had a South Africa Drumline Connections Program that came in. We had a blast. It's all about building connections and learning to agree to disagree. But we all have challenges, and we all make growth, and we all have done that. And I am blessed that we have her, and I would retain her 100%. She is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. Ms. Kreitz, same question.
So I had the opportunity to go to dinner with her the other night, and I had a really great experience. Now, I was not around during her election and all the stuff that happened around that politically in the community at all. But I always base everybody on their merits. So I believe she's doing her job. I believe she's doing a great job. And my interaction with her was was very friendly, and I really liked sitting down with her, learning about her family, learning about her passion, why she's doing what she's doing. So as long as she is meeting the requirements of the job, I would absolutely vote for her again. But we need to look at what's going on with the strategic plan and all the things laid out. So as long as those needs are met, I'm okay with it. And I'm okay with anybody else that would want to challenge her if they think that they could make a better choice. But as of right now, I tried to meet with everybody when I decided to run. And I met with Tim Bergeron, I met with Mark Mullins, I met with Amy Elwood, just all the people that make it run and make our system really good. And she is, you know, at the top of that, and I had a great interaction with her. I think that she's a good human being. I think she's a great mom. I think that she really cares about the students of Seminole County. And as long as she continues to do her job well, I'm behind her.
Thank you so much. The school board has spent a lot of time, as have school boards across Florida, hearing from the group Moms for Liberty. What impact has this group had on the way the board does business? And would you rate it as positive, negative, or mixed bag? And let's start with Ms. Sanchez.
Hi. So thank you for the question. As a citizen, as well as a sitting chair of the school board, I think it's critical that we hear all of our constituents. Everybody's voices need to be heard. And I may not agree with the Moms for Liberty's views on things, but I can have that issue with anybody or any group. But just like anything, you know, I don't label Ds or Rs or anybody else. We don't do that in the classroom. And I don't ask anybody about certain things in their own personal life. If they have an issue with something, if they have a problem with ESE services, for example, then I address it. And I see what I can do to help them and make anybody and everybody feel comfortable. Now, everybody, First Amendment rights, everybody has the right to say and share their opinions as long as they're respectful to each other. That's the key. I treat others with respect, and I expect others to treat each other with respect. I don't believe in bullies. I don't believe in anybody being mean or nasty. And yes, we've had a couple that have been not so friendly, not necessarily Moms for Liberty, but just people in general. So when they come to the board meeting and they say things that are just toxic, and they just, they don't know the whole picture, and they say things that are really, really toxic, it is really offensive. And, you know, they need to change their tone. They need to learn to work with us because we will do whatever we can to help all of our constituents, anybody, and make sure that all of our members feel accepted. And if there's, as long as they're registered dividend and they're helping in our schools for anybody, it's a critical component for everyone. So like I said, anybody that has passion for education is a critical component into our educational world. So thank you.
Ms. Arguello, same question.
Sure. So I think, and it's hard because we tend to focus on one group, Moms for Liberty, when there are many groups on, and you say on both sides, but I believe that each issue, there's a spectrum. So it's not just one side of a coin or another. But when we talk in particular about Moms for Liberty, I think unfortunately, there, what represents them now may not be everything that they believe, but what is represented is a lot of, unfortunately, divisiveness, a lot of creating chaos, unfortunately. That's been the outcome, not that that was necessarily the original intent. But I would rate that more on a negative because I think it's been nonproductive. And if anything, it's produced pressure to make decisions that impact many people negatively at the guise of, you know, as a parent, I want the right to choose for my kid what content is available for them. You know, I don't want that taken away from me. And as the parent of a child who is in the minority, is a person of color, I would like my child to have access to information and books where she can be represented. Growing up, for me, Their Eyes Were Watching God was something I read in high school. That was one of the first books where I saw a black female protagonist that I related to. And it was a game changer for me at high, in high school. I still remember that book. So, you know, when we talk about things like book bans, for me, that's the biggest correlation I have to Moms for Liberty. The, whether the intent was, you know, protection of some children, the way that this was implemented does impact many kids, unfortunately, negatively. And I do believe there's a more productive way to have those conversations where we can find a solution where, again, if you are a parent of a child that wants to reserve, you know, information from your child, that's a great decision for you to make with your child. But when we make these large decisions that impact everyone from the perspective of just one portion of the culture, it can be very harmful for many people. So for me, I really think there's a more productive way for us to have conversation and solve some of these still challenging issues, like what level of information should kids have access to. We also need to accommodate the fact that kids have access to the internet and a lot more information than just what we're seeing in some of these many very outdated books. So I think we have an opportunity to be more collaborative, more productive towards positive and making sure that parents truly do have the choice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kreitz, same question.
So I believe in the First Amendment of all parents on all sides of all issues. And I do feel, I've looked back at all the school board meetings when the pandemic hit, and I felt that it was good that everybody was being able to exercise their opinion. I do not believe in violence, and I don't believe that our local chapter has created violence. I can't speak nationally. I can just speak for the people locally that I've interacted with. And most of those parents are parents of special needs children that were not getting their needs met or the teachers were retaliating against them. We have one mom in particular that has been ignored for a few years. So her voice is obviously the loudest at all of these meetings. And she is at the heart, just a really good parent that just wants her child's needs to be met. As far as the choosing whether kids can have access to certain content, I agree with Ms. Arguello and Ms. Sanchez that it should be parentally guided. I believe that there should be parental consent for any illicit content, and Tallahassee has made sure of that via a law. So right now, I feel that, you know, with the current board, the board is doing an okay job with allowing voices to be heard. I'm just not sure that those changes are being made.
Short, simple question on this one. Should Seminole County adopt a blanket ban on cellphone use in schools or at least middle school? Or where would you place that limit? And we'll start with that with Ms. Kreitz.
No, I think that as a parent, my kids don't have cell phones. Again, they're one, four, and five. And I hope that we're not going to be engaging in screen stuff for a little bit of time. But I would want access to my middle school or high But I would want access to my middle school or high school or if something were to happen in the school. So a code red happens, I want my child to be able to text me to say, hey, mom, I'm good. Or hey, mom, this is what's happening. We are here. I just don't think they should be used for classroom agendas. I don't think teachers should be saying, pull out your phone, look up Google. I think that we have encyclopedias. I think that if a teacher wanted to use the internet, they could plan for that in advance and many teachers do that. So I don't think there should be banned fully, absolutely not. I think that we live in a world where everybody, including us, are on our phones way too much. But they are necessary for contact. So I would like what Orange County does. They do it in the backpack, bell to bell, and then if there's an emergency, they can use them to contact guardians or parents.
Thank you for that. Ms. Arguello, same question.
Yeah. I also would not be in favor of a full blanket ban without first taking the time to, to collect input from parents, teachers, and students who will be directly impacted by the ban. I think it's extremely important for us, especially with, again, this is a shift that we're talking about because for a while we've been used to, as parents, having access to our students. Our students have been used to having access to their phones. So I think it's important for us to actively incorporate the voices of those who will be impacted to help shape the policy. And then as, so that way we can initially have their support as we implement a change. I do believe that we also, in addition to whether we do a bell to bell or, you know, have a classroom by classroom rule, I believe we also need to add in additional education about building positive digital citizens. And that needs to start even younger because our students and children are accessing social media younger and younger. And we need to help equip them with the skills to be able to positively engage. Because there are some benefits of, and we talk about connection as a word of the year. There are benefits to being able to connect and find communities that suit you in an online space. But there are also a lot of dangers. So as we talk about cell phone usage in class and whether we ban or not ban, I think there's also an important conversation about how to educate and equip our students to be positive digital citizens in this hybrid world. And how can we use technology to teach our students? Again, we talk about bullying. It's not just happening in the classrooms and the halls. It's also happening online. So it's going to be extremely important to pair whatever policy we land on as a collaboration with education and guidelines so that our kids can be healthy. And then as families modeling that behavior, you know, studies show that even if you go three weeks with a reduction of social media to 30 minutes a day, it can greatly improve your anxiety and depression scores. So there are things that, again, you don't have to take it away forever, but we can encourage as a community, having digital detoxes. Having times where it's like a 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. before, after that, you shouldn't need social media. So I think we can find new efforts to create healthy digital environments along with our physical environment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ms. Sanchez, same question.
So last year, we implemented the no cellphone usage in the schools, in the classrooms. And we still have the inconsistency of teachers allowing them to use it. And I truly feel that they shouldn't be using them in the classroom. I think they need to be put away. But also if they're using them in the hallway, I've already said this numerous times at board meetings as well. They, if they're videoing or doing TikTok or anything like that, they need to have some repercussions for that. I am, I also believe that our teachers are tired of seeing these kids coming into the classrooms with their AirPods pieces into their ears. While they are, their cell phones may be put away, but I'm not sure they're truly listening to the teachers. They're not fully engaged. This social media issue has become such a, a serious issue, an addiction actually, that has created so many mental health issues. Because we see so many families and people in society picking up their cell phone devices everywhere they're at. And it is really sad. And that's why I brought to the attention to the board about eight months ago that we needed to join the class action lawsuit against social media. And we did join it and we are now part of that class action lawsuit because it is being, it is detrimental. Everybody needs to be well balanced and our teachers want their classrooms where they can teach and they don't want disruption. So having the cell phones out, absolutely not. Now, if they need to reach their student for emergency or they need to reach them later on, that's fine. But we're also doing some training in our communities as well. We are rolling out our Student Success Express bus. We will be having parenting engagements. We're serving, going into the communities to help them understand. This rollout is phenomenal and something that I'm super excited about that we have been talking about at the board meetings and open board discussions. So clearly, cell phones are, need to be really watched and monitored even at home as well. Thank you.
Is Seminole County doing an adequate job of providing age appropriate sex education to students? And we'll start with Ms. Arguello.
As a public health professional, I'm always going to push for more education. I think within the bounds of what Seminole County has been provided as far as legislation, they are using what they have used, which is, you know, approved education material and curriculum. But I do see a greater opportunity because when we talk about sex education, that can mean different things for me. I think of more broadly our reproductive health education and helping equip our students to understand what's going on with their bodies. Especially as we talk about half of our student population being female, who will eventually at some point, mostly middle school, high school, be experiencing menstruation. So I think there is a greater opportunity for an increase in reproductive healthcare to equip our students, not only with making those healthy choices when they're out in the community, but also how to best manage their own personal health. And another aspect of that is because we are in schools where one in three students are on free and reduced lunch and we have an increasing number of students who are unfortunately experiencing homelessness, we can do things like increasing. So there are already existing efforts to provide hygiene products and menstrual products to students. But there is an opportunity to increase that because we know things like absenteeism can be impacted by students not having access to the, the materials that they need. So increasing education, increasing access to hygiene products and helping to create a community that empowers our students who experience a very big majority of their life, they're also managing menstruation. So again, as a public health professional, I think that we do well with sex education, but there is more to our students' health and certain vital signs that we need to make sure that we're being proactive with educating and also helping to equip those students who may not have access to just the basic hygiene tools that they need to be able to show up and focus on their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, same question.
So I had the benefit of teaching fourth and fifth graders where actually they start getting menstrual cycles even as early as that. Especially with the growth hormones that have been injected in some of the foods. Luckily, our apple, Red Apple Dining Services, we don't. Our food is completely growth hormone free and fresh and everything like that. Comprehensive health education has been going on for decades and the laws have changed, but we have adapted. We did continue it because we felt it was critical. We didn't hear back from DOE. So, but we felt it was important. And we always make sure that the families have that opportunity to observe and watch the videos that are being shared. So they can see if it is appropriate that, something that they may want to discuss on their own with them or if it's something that we can have our school nurses or any of our wonderful employees that are a part of our student support services. We partner with the Health Department, which we are blessed about. And you know, like Ms. Arguello said, with the Student Success Express going into the underserved communities and then hopefully getting a second bus eventually, because I'm already jumping on that, we will be able to reach out to everyone so we can make sure that they all have the products that they need. But currently, right now, we do have them available in all schools. Should we put them a part of the pantry? Not a bad idea. I'm, I'm all about making sure that, you know, we compromise, we listen, we learn from each other. And that is critical. And I, you know, we need to make sure that everybody has those, those products available for them. But at the same time, everybody needs to know what's going on in their bodies and their body changes and to know that this is normal. And that they're not any different than anybody else. And that's why it's critical that this education is being embedded into our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kreitz.
So I don't know much about what's going on in our schools with sex ed, except for my experience. And they did a great job in Seminole County. We had to get signed off on it and it was all above board and we learned everything we need to learn. I agree with Ms. Arguello that access to products is everything. I grew up with nothing. So when I had a job, sometimes it was between gas or you know what. And so those are, you know, decisions that I, if a school could provide those products, that would be unbelievable. I, I'm happy to hear Ms. Sanchez say that those are available for girls that are menstruating. And I think that it's important that they know when they're going through this stuff, that they do have mental health counselors and people to explain to them what's going on because it can be a crazy time on top of everything else that goes on in your world as a teenager. So I, I'm hearing that it's, that's pretty good and that we can always make improvements, but I'm open to both of their suggestions as well.
Thank you all. And this is, this is one of my favorite questions because it's something that everybody seems to enjoy talking about. Seminole County offers its students multiple options for career and technical education. Academies, intensive courses of study, even certificate programs that allow kids to graduate high school ready to step into a decent paying job. Do you think students across Seminole County have adequate access to a wide range of programs? And where would you push for making additions? Let's start with Ms. Sanchez.
All right. So yes, this is one of my favorite topics, just like you just said. This is so important because I will love, I'm, I'm so proud that we've been able to have your what's your E, your, your pathway. Not all kids are going to college and it's extremely important to ask our students, what would you like to do with your life? What is your path? Because college is not the end all for everybody. And we are so blessed because we have over 53 phenomenal career technical educational programs. We have our own helicopter, our own plane. We have our own aviation mechanics. We, we have the best partnerships with businesses. We are so lucky. Now, of course, there's always room to grow. So last year, we had a school district come in and they actually went to Seminole High School with us. We took them on a tour. And afterwards, I did a deep dive with the instructor there. And one of his concerns was, he's like, you know, Abby, I don't feel a lot of the teachers even know what's going on at this school or some of the teachers or students. He's like, we need to make sure that we have those students and teachers, faculty throughout, come around. And so actually, Dr. Sean Gard-Herald, who's the director of this wonderful program and along with many of our phenomenal ePathways team, they started a course this week with teachers visiting different programs. And I am super happy to see that they all listened. They, we had a need for everybody to understand and we have ambassador program now that we've embedded. It's something that I'm proud to say I had pushed for where it's kind of like Leadership Seminole, but we have an ambassador program. So we open it up to about 100 people. They come in. They get to see all the wonderful things that our county does. And so we are always forward thinking. We have EMT. We have the Teach Program. We have so many unique opportunities for all of our students, magnet and programs of emphasis. So I'm super excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kreitz.
So yes, I think that we have a plethora of options for kids and I think it's wonderful, all the magnet schools, all the, I love what Seminole did. I went to Seminole when they first had the pool and the nurse academy had just started. So to see what it's done is unbelievable. I think our bigger challenge is like Ms. Sanchez said, giving awareness to parents and to teachers that these programs exist. I would like to put in place either a, a letter or some type of news, newsletter to show all of the parents in elementary school and middle school, hey, as your kids are growing through the system, these are all your options. I, I think that the teachers should know what's going on. But as far as, you know, the, the biggest problem that I'm seeing is getting the kids to that place. So we, we're having a reading issue. Our literacy rate is down. And I think in order to be able to take advantage of all these wonderful programs, the kids need to learn how to read, write, and do math. And I think we're struggling in that in lower levels. But as far as the higher level and the access to all the programs, it's unbelievable. And I think that we are, we're one of the best in the country for that. So that's something to be super proud of.
Ms. Arguello.
Yes, I, I'll echo the, the value add that is very clear in Seminole County. You know, I grew up and graduated from Brevard County Public Schools and we had great programs. I, you know, participated in Odyssey of the Mind and the Gifted Program that helped shape my educational career. And so there's a lot of value in having choice, the freedom of choice. And certainly, students in Seminole County have many things to choose from where they can follow their passions. They can test things out early. Maybe they think they want to do engineering, but after a year of a program that focuses on that, it gives them the opportunity before an expensive decision of starting a degree and then changing. So there are great opportunities. I recently had the opportunity to sit down with one of the school counselors at one of the local middle schools. And one of the things that she was advocating for was starting those conversations earlier. So we know, of course, those programs, the opportunities are in middle and high school. But with our elementary kids, starting to get them thinking about trying, you know, maybe there's a path where they have more of an inclination towards the arts or towards music or language and helping them to know that even going into middle school, you can make choices to start to explore those passions. And then also increasing those aptitude tests a bit earlier. So those aptitude tests where we start to, again, assess kids' skills, we, and I know there's a lot of assessments already, but what are, where are their strengths to start to get them thinking about what that could look like? Because often when you ask little kids, you know, what do you want to be? It's either like a doctor or a lawyer. There's a couple professions. But especially in Seminole County, there are so many wonderful opportunities. The earlier that we can start to expose our kids to these opportunities and get them thinking about where they want to be and how they want to contribute to the world, the better. We also need to support our staff. So in addition to teachers, again, talking to our school counselors, they get to spend very little of their time doing what they are equipped to do, which is help guide students to these different paths. So apart, a lot of this is really on how we work together as a system beyond teachers to make sure that we are fitting our school counselors, our, our different positions, making sure that they have the right workload on them to be able to be effective. There are, you know, skilled counselors that are able to help guide students into the direction of these paths, but they need the time to be able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We could probably spend another two hours talking about Seminole County schools and, and, and the needs and the challenges and the very, very bright spots. But, but we promised we'd get you out at a certain time. So I just wanted to let people know before we go to our closing statements. The Orlando Sentinel will be making an endorsement in this race. However, we are going to urge our, the people watching this video and the people who are reading that endorsement, don't stop your research there. All of these candidates have websites. You can find them on social media. They've spoken at local forums. There are videos. There are a wide range of, of resources in addition to, of course, our own excellent coverage, which, which we've already had some stories on and we will be following these races closely. Take a look at everybody, decide who best fits your values for a member of the Seminole County School Board. And then make sure to vote. Early voting is already started or will be starting soon, actually. No, I think it's already started. But at any rate, there's also mail-in balloting. And, and then voting on person on Election Day, which is August 20th. So just make sure that you do take a look at these candidates and then vote. Because Seminole County's had a wonderful school board for many years and that is in large part because of the way its residents support the schools. And so, so you have a role to play and we hope you do. And with that, I am going to go to my little list that was drawn up by a randomizer. And, and we'll do our closing statements. We'll start with, I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Kreitz.
It's okay. It's hard to pronounce. So as a mom who's about to enter a 12-year journey with my children in Seminole County Public Schools, it's really important to me that everybody gets access to a great education. I did not have the opportunities that my children have. I was brought up in a home with a single parent and a lot of alcohol abuse. And so school to me was everything. And I had unbelievable teachers and I always had, you know, a victory mentality of if you work hard, you know, here's the path and you can get out of your situation. And so I, like many parents in Seminole County, wanted my children to go to Seminole County Public Schools. We have a lot of options right now, given what our governor has done with the voucher program. And I have the privilege, if I want to, to homeschool them, but not every child has that. So my job as a Seminole County School Board member will be to make sure that every child gets everything that they need out of their education every day. And that sets me apart because I- they need out of their education every day. And that sets me apart, because I will be with my kids doing all of this for the next 12 years, whether it's myself, or in public school, or as a board member, or maybe just a mom doing it. So I have a lot of vested interest in making sure that my kids have a great education, and all the kids in Seminole County do. So I appreciate your vote. And yes, look at our websites, look at all of us. I also want to say thank you to Abby and Stephanie. I think that all of us have great ideas. I think all of us are good women. I think all of us really want the best for the kids. And I think all of us would make great members. So, you know, obviously, I want myself to win, but I would be happy to send my child to a school with either of them serving. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Arguello, you're up next.
Thank you. And I also want to start with just gratitude for this experience and for my colleagues in this space. You know, for me, this is a transformational time for our community. We're going through, we're living in the Jetsons era right now. You know, things are so different from what they were before. And as someone who, I like to say, I'm from the avocado toast generation. I remember a brief amount of time without the internet and being a student. And it's just different now. And we have so many challenges that our teachers are facing. As a working parent who hasn't always, I haven't been the mom who was able to attend every program for my daughter. I was the mom that was the last one to pick up my kid, you know, because I was working and then working a second job or continuing my education to be able to provide for my daughter. So I want to be a voice to represent our working families. We have a lot more families that are struggling with our economy and with the rising cost of everything. And I'm proud that as a working parent, I can bring a different perspective. And also, as someone who spent 11 years working my way up in one of the largest healthcare systems in central Florida, I can bring a unique perspective from a different industry that also has gone through severe challenges. We talk about times during the pandemic where the nursing workforce completely transformed, and had to adapt to be able to meet the needs that were growing at that time. So there's a lot of learnings from that experience that I'm excited to be able to bring. I want to serve on the school board to be an advocate for all students. We have a lot of tough challenges. There's simply not enough money and not enough of resources. So how do we use what we have as wisely as possible? And, you know, when I hear that we've already tried something, I still will fight to try more, because I believe it's worth us measuring twice and going as deeply as we can, and learning from perhaps what didn't work before. I don't want to write things off just because we tried it. So I'm willing to innovate. I'm willing to stick my neck out there for your kids, as much as I fight for my own. And the most important piece is to be a relationship builder. And as someone who, you know, comes from a different background, but is from, born and raised here in Florida, I'm excited to bring people together, not only within the district, but bring together subject matter experts to help solve some of the challenging, challenging issues that we're facing. I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that my passion reads through, that I want to be here to fight for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sanchez, can you wrap this up, please?
Sure. So first of all, thank you to both Stephanie and Kelly. I know I gave you my business card, and I had an opportunity to meet with Kelly beforehand. And Stephanie, we had spoken as well, because I don't like dirty campaigning. I never have. And I always felt that if anything happens, it's extremely important that we communicate, because I don't want anybody to have anybody on their campaign trail doing something that's not acceptable. And, you know, like I said before, this is something that I have had a passion for, and have been blessed to be served as a school board member and the chair of the school board. I've had the expertise of being in education for over 35 years, 26 years of those being in the classroom. I have built strong relationships with teachers, employees, administrators, with our leadership team. And it is critical. Drinking out of a fire hose at this time right now, probably going to be the best interest for everyone. But I think it's about showing up and being there. And I have done that for years and years and years, way before I even became a school board member. And if you have a chance, read Kathy Swartlow's commentary that she wrote about what it takes to be a school board member. She wrote it in the Orlando Sentinel. It was a great article. And there's also a League of Women Voters guide that they shared, voting for school board members, a checklist of what important qualities they should have. And I meet all of those, and it's extremely important. We've been able to implement so many wonderful programs, like the physics buses, something that I've been passionate about, listening to kids, listening to our teachers, implementing all those different programs. And I have had that. And I show up. I am not afraid to speak to Tallahassee. I meet with everybody, and everyone knows that I'm able to do that all the time. And this is a 24/7 job, and I'm blessed that I'm able to do that. And all of my kids attended Seminole County Schools. I was PTA president at Lake Brantley High School for seven years. I have served on the Equity Advisory Board and numerous other boards throughout the county. So please vote for Abby Sanchez, and please visit my website. Thank you so much. And thank you all for being here. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much, and we wish you all the best of luck.